This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, well, it's my great pleasure to, as our first part of the program, you know, the second part is going to be the school board debate, but as our first part of our program, it's my great pleasure to introduce someone who literally needs no introduction. But, you know, when I moved to Arlington in 1986, the idea of Democrats winning statewide office consistently was really not a foregone conclusion and really took a lot of work by a lot of people and a lot of leadership. And there were days when I was very tired and in despair and leaders like Terry McAuliffe just was able to pick us up and inspire us to go out and fight another day. And I think he was very instrumental in the overall campaign to turn Virginia blue. Obviously, he served as governor and in a number of other very important roles in the Democratic Party. I will, without further ado, turn over the floor to Governor Terry McAuliffe.
Well, thank you, Bob, and all the Arlington Democrats. Hope we're having a great lunch. It's really a great honor to be with you today. And I want to first thank all of you for your terrific work, the grassroots activism. You know, you're the ones, Bob, talk about how we became blue. It's really the folks on the ground making the calls, knocking on the doors. And I just want, first of all, thank you for all the great work that you've done. We've made great progress. Think eight years ago today, when I was running for governor, if you remember, the Republicans controlled everything. They had all three statewide. They had both of our chambers. We were fortunate to win in 2013 at the state. We won the governor, lieutenant governor, and we won the attorney general. And that was the beginning of a real change, a real shift here in Virginia. We had to lean in hard. I had to stop all of their crazy bills, the transvaginal bill, the trap laws. I ended up vetoing 120 bills, of course, a record, never was defeated, but the most anti-gay, anti-women, anti-environment pro-gone in America. We were able to stop that and defeat them 120 to zero, but really leaned in, put a record amount into education, and inherited the largest deficit, left the biggest surplus four years later with a record 200,000 new jobs and personal income gained all over Virginia by 14%. So we've made great progress. And then Ralph Northam has continued on now with the Democratic legislature that we have, which really picked up in 2019. And many of you campaigned hard. I thank you for the great work you did in 19. As you know, I did 141 events myself in 60 days, took over the coordinated campaign. And really, since 2009, I've quarterbacked the state party, the funding and the operations. And, you know, for me, I bleed blue to make sure that we have good Democrats in office. And now we're at a real juncture point here with COVID. COVID is now upon us. The effects of it are going to be with us for a while. Since COVID started, 197,000 Virginians lost their job. Now, I just told you, I created 200,000. So all of those great jobs we created, you know, they were in different sectors, but 200,000 people without work today that had a job before COVID. We still have 700,000 Virginians without access to health care, including 300,000 Black and Latinos, 100,000 children. We still have about 260,000 Virginians who are under the threat of eviction. If you take the top 10 cities in America for evictions, Virginia is five of the 10. That's got to end. And that's what we can build, what I call a new economy, big, bold, not tinkering around the edges anymore. And that's why I'm running for governor again. I got recruited by the leadership of the Black Caucus, who asked me to come back. You helped the Black and Brown community so much last time. We need you again. We got to get the economy going again. And a lot of the folks, many on this call, encouraged me to come back because we really, this COVID is going to be with us. So we have an opportunity to rebuild. And that's what I'm excited about, with a Democratic legislature, to really go big and bold, not the way Virginia always likes to do things on the cheap. We got to think out of the box. And that's why I'm running for governor. I lead on education. If you get a chance, I have 12 major policy proposals. You know, I have more proposals than everyone else running combined. I'm very serious, as you all know about policy. I always tell you how I pay for my policies. But I lead on education. Because education today, we've got to have a massive investment. I call for $2 billion. If you take average Virginia teacher pay today and compare it to the average pay of our citizens, Virginia ranks 50th out of 50 states. Really? Dead last. And that's a disgrace for the 10th wealthiest state in the United States of America. You could go to Maryland, DC, or Delaware, or Pennsylvania, and make $10,000 to $20,000 more a teacher. So let's pay our teachers above the national average for the first time ever. Let's get the 40,000 children at risk pre-K. 40,000 three- and four-year-olds today don't have it. Let's make sure every child has access to broadband. 14% of our students don't. How is that fair during COVID? I mean, many of our children are driving to a McDonald's trying to get on a Wi-Fi hotspot. That's not fair. And it's not rural. 40% of the 14% actually live in urban areas. I call for scholarship. If you teach for five years, diversify our educator base. We'll pay your room, board, and tuition. We're down 1,000 teachers. We need to replace them. So I go big on education, housing, health care, to get every Virginian covered with access to health care. So I'm not going to go through all my plans. You can read them yourself. Huge plans about why and where, how we need to take Virginia to the next level. But since I announced this candidacy four months ago, we've built a gigantic coalition. We have doubled the numbers of the General Assembly than everybody else combined. I have three times as many members of the Black Caucus as everybody else combined. I have 100 educators. I have 250 electeds and leaders from around the Commonwealth. All 133 cities and counties are supporting. Just many of your elected officials are with me. I look on the, see on the call if I see some. But of course, I've got Adam Evin. I've got Barbara, oh, I got Janet Howell. I got Rip Sullivan. I want to make sure I forget anybody. I had Alonzo Lopez, Matt DiFerante I have, Jay Fazette, Walter Tahada, Mary Hines, Garvey Pennan. A huge group of folks who elected and former elected from your area who've come out. But I'm excited. But let me just say this finally. Nobody should think this is easy, what we are trying to do here. If you think for 44 straight years in Virginia, whoever wins the White House, the party that wins the White House, the other party wins the governor's mansion. For 44 years, there's always a natural kickback. I'm the only person to break that trend. Of course, President Obama won in '12, and I won in '13. But Donald Trump has driven our turnout the last four years. Donald Trump is gone. And we've got a five-seat majority in the House of Delegates. We're going to have at least 10 seats in play. We have our work cut out to keep all three statewide and keep that House of Delegates. We got to motivate. We got to excite and do what you folks do every single day. I mean, you're the bluest of the blue, and you know how to do it. But this is a lot of work, what we're going to do. And if we get this back, all the progress we made in the last eight years will go just like that. So we got to win this one. Game on. I'm excited. And I'll be glad to take some questions.
Right. As he indicated, Terry's willing to take a few questions. I'll lead off with the first one. Terry, what do you want to do about economic development in Virginia? And why do you feel, of all the candidates, you're best suited?
Well, that's sort of my sweet spot. As you know, I did create a record 200,000 jobs last time. I did inherit the largest deficit, left the biggest surplus. As you all know, I did 35 trade missions around the globe, five continents, more than any governor in U.S. history, 1,100 new companies. You know, I worked like a dog. I killed myself traveling around recruiting businesses back. I'm the one who negotiated and brought Nestle Corporation back to your area. 1,200 very high-paying jobs. I wrote the bid for Amazon. I have a lot of experience in this. Percentage-wise, you look at our growth as, when I was governor, I mean, we exceeded. People were shocked around the nation. I was the chairman of the National Governors Association. Everybody looked at Virginia as the Mao. Now, we're going to have to do that again. That's why I call for teaching STEM-age courses early on, every grade, every level, and computer science skills, which we don't do today. We do teach cyber. I put it in last time. But that's how we're going to rebuild this economy. We've got to begin teaching, and that's why education is so important to me. I did put a record billion in last time, even though I had a deficit from the Republicans. But I knew if I did it, I could get Amazon. I could get Nestle and all these other companies back. So for me, not just talk. I've done it my whole life. And I see our great Sheriff Beth Arz, and other of our supporters on Zoom. Welcome, Beth. Great to see you, Sheriff. But listen, that's what I love to do, is economic development. And when I talk jobs, folks, when I say a job, that means a good, high-paying job with benefits. $7, $25. And that's why I call for my plan, if you go to my plan, raise, get the minimum wage to 2024, paid sick days, paid hazard pay, and collective bargaining for our state employees. If you look at my plan, and family medical leave. But you know, these are issues important. This year, we had a hazard pay bill. It got stuck in the House. The Senate wouldn't pass it. Now, this was hazard pay for COVID to go retroactive to help the people who'd gotten COVID. But wouldn't get through the Senate. So Chris Hurst, Delegate Hurst, Delegate Jay Jones called me up and said, it's dead in the Senate. We need you. I took it over, got a hold of Dick Saz, along with a few others, and we were able to get that bill passed. The Maryland legislation was dead in the Senate. They called me. I'm the guy that called in and called five or six strategic calls to senators on that Friday night. So you know, I like to lean in on these issues. And economic development is what I love to do. I like to see people lifted up.
Does someone else have a question for the governor? Yes, Joseph Pelton.
I'm just wondering about reapportionment. Will that impact the election, do you think, in any way strategically?
Yeah. So it's very confusing because we're not going to get the census numbers, you know, for four or five more months. Then they have the waiting period. So we're going to have the House of Delegates are going to run on the existing lines. Then, you know, there's going to be a battle, but they will, they may, there is a chance they are going to have to run again next year. It will be sent to the courts. Obviously, there'll be an argument that, you know, these are constitutionally mandated by the Constitution of the United States. So there is a chance. Now, I do worry. I think many of you heard me talk about this before. It will not be in play this year. But next year, we have this commission. And you've all heard me talk about this. What I didn't like about this commission that they put together is if two Republicans veto it, goes to the Supreme Court to pick the master. Now, as you all know, I don't have a good history with our Supreme Court. It is a Republican political organization. It is appointed by the legislature. We're in one of two states, us in South Carolina. When I did the restoration of rights for 206,000 Virginians, more than any governor in U.S. history, I got sued by the Republicans. The Supreme Court, shockingly, ruled against me. And their ruling was, you love this, it wasn't based on constitutional theory. They said, no governor's done it before. You know, even with my little Georgetown law degree that I didn't really ever go to class for, but I actually graduated. But I even knew that wasn't a constitutional theory. That's a political theory. We've never impeached anybody either. That doesn't mean you can't do it. So I am very concerned that this court, who is even more conservative than when I was on it, picks a master. And that's what I worry about. So we'll see what happens. But I've been very vocal on this. I'm all for citizen control. But why would we would default on this to give it to the Supreme Court, which I fought day and night on civil rights issues, is shocking to me.
Stuart Scott.
A question on solar energy. As I understand it, you know, we're going to expand solar energy in the state. There's a question of where you put these big solar farms. And I think that there are some in southern and western parts of the states that say, we're giving up our land for the electricity for northern Virginia. How do you see that playing out? And what kind of return for, do these areas, are these areas going to receive for giving up their land for solar farms?
Listen, Stuart, we need to lean in. I'd like to see Virginia be a leader on solar. You know, when I was in office, I had a wacky right-wing legislature. You all know that. The folks I had to deal with were just bizarre. Wind Medicaid expansion, you know, anti-women, anti-gay, all the crazy stuff, anti-environment. So I had to take unilateral action. But you know, I took solar production up 8,000%, increased jobs by 65%. These are going to be the jobs of the future. It was the biggest opportunity for us on the wind. I negotiated the first offshore utility, so, wind project, of course, that is being constructed right now in Virginia Beach. On solar, I did the first, largest in the mid-Atlantic, on a huge, empty farm down in Rock County. So there's plenty of opportunity for us to do more solar. I think I did three or four. But as I say, I took it up 8,000%. But solar and wind together, those are going to be the jobs of the future. If you look at my environmental plan, I call for being 100% clean energy by 2035. I have the most aggressive plan of anybody.
I certainly support these renewable energy, and I have all along. But there has been this question raised, and I haven't heard you say anything about how the areas that give up their lands for the solar farms, how do they get fair recompense for these lands?
Well, sure. It's just like any commercial negotiation. I mean, it's their land, and they negotiate. I mean, they could put a billing on it. They could put a, you know, it's a commercial transaction. The owner of the private land decides to sell or not sell. And he wants to do solar. If he wants to do solar, great. Or he could do something else. I mean, there's no mystery to that. It's just a commercial transaction with the person who owns the land. And it's a negotiation. If they don't want to sell, this is not eminent domain. It's a total, you know, private sale. And either the owner accepts it or he doesn't.
Another question, Craig Hines.
Craig, could you speak up?
Yes. I'm happy you have a lot of, you know, support from up here. But I think the most telling endorser you've got is Louise Lucas. She's been around so long. She knows how to get things done. And I think that just speaks volumes for you.
Well, if you look at, Craig, the broad coalition, so clearly, the most powerful African-American woman politician in Virginia history is state senate president Louise Lucas, who was chairing my campaign. But you know, I also have the first African-American woman House Majority Leader, Sharnell Herring is chairing my campaign. The first woman speaker, Eileen Philakorn, huge, you know, endorser part of the campaign. I mean, I even have the Speaker of the U.S. House, Nancy Pelosi, with me. So we've got a huge, broad coalition. But, and I think the point is, and everybody's entitled to run, that the question would be, why isn't the 34 members of the General Assembly double anyone else combined of everybody else? Why are they all with me? They work with other people. They decide, why? Because they know we went big and bold before. I was not afraid to take on any big actions on restoration of rights. I banned the Confederate flag. I banned the box, reduced juvenile detention population by two-thirds, leaned in on the environment, leaned in on health care, leaned in on education, and was the biggest job creator we ever had. So you know that with COVID, we're going to have to deal with a lot of these issues for a long time. It is really time to go big and bold. And that's why, Craig, we did it before. And now with a Democratic legislature, watch out. I just think Virginia can take off like a booster rocket. Thank you.
Governor McAuliffe, would you like to take about two minutes to summarize and be sure to mention your website to us?
Yeah. Well, we got to thank you. As I say, I just want to, first of all, thank all of you. I mean, you know, I look around this Zoom call. There are so many people that I see knocking the doors, making the phone calls. So, you know, you make the difference. We do have a primary coming up on June 8. You can already go and get your request, your absentee ballot. I would encourage as many folks to do it. If you want to get a yard sign, just sign up on our thing. You'll have one the next day on your yard. And we have a massive campaign going on all across the Commonwealth. I compete in red areas. I just reduced unemployment in every rural county by nearly 50%. I don't think there's a part of this Commonwealth that Democrats should not compete. We are the job creators. We're the ones fighting for health care and education and housing. And, you know, we're not going to cede anything. So if you get a chance, Terry, for Virginia, as I say, I have 12 plans. I have more than anyone else combined, everybody else. I mean, I'm very serious about policy. The last time I was governor, as you all know, I put a scorecard up on the governor's website, and I had boxes to check. Every campaign promise I had made when I ran for governor, you know, I checked to see what I was doing. And I'm going to do that again. So, you know, listen, this is a big, important election for the future of Virginia. We are right there, but we could easily go back. And I am really worried about a 57 House of Delegates seat right now. Very concerned. I do not want to be governor with a Republican legislature. I've had that great honor, and I don't ever want to do that again. So this is going to take a big, bold, broad campaign, something I'm used to, and making sure we lift everybody up. So I just want to say thank you to all of you. And let's go get them. Big year. And thank you for helping with Biden. We won the state by 400,000 votes, which is truly historic. And, you know, take it to the next level. And having Biden in the White House, you know, I've been buddies of his for 40 years. We're going to get a lot of assets back here in Virginia. So I look forward to working with him and working with you. So thank you, and have a great lunch.
Thank you so much for joining us. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. So the next item is our school board forum. And I just want to outline the rules. We have two candidates, Mary Cadera and Miranda Turner. They're both on the line now. We're going to have five-minute opening statements from each. You, the audience, will be able to pose questions. Each candidate gets two minutes to answer each question, and we'll alternate who answers the question first. And then we'll have two-minute closing statements from each candidate. And so now, since you've all memorized this set of rules here, I'm going to turn it over to Mary Cadera for her opening statement. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Bob. I am really delighted to be with you today and was so excited to listen to Terry McAuliffe talk about his plans for education. That really got me fired up. Thank you for the chance to talk about this, your school board race, and to introduce myself as a candidate. I've spent my career working in education, and serving on the school board has been a longtime interest of mine. I stepped forward to run this year for two reasons. First, I believe there are a set of extraordinary challenges facing public education in Arlington and across the country. Second, I feel like the past few years have highlighted for all of us that our democracy really needs well-informed citizens who understand and value things like truth, and data, and science, and the Constitution. I believe that a strong public education system prepares kids to be full participants in our democracy and to thrive in their own adult lives. So for me, as someone committed for the cause of public education, the time to serve is now. I've talked to current and past school board members, and I know that this job is a really big commitment, requiring many hours and much effort over each four-year term. So what do I foresee over the next four years for Arlington Public Schools? First, there's the immediate and urgent challenge of how we're going to reopen our schools fully, safely, and as quickly as possible for students who are able and ready to return. The past year has placed such extraordinary burdens on students, their families, and our teachers. Many of our students have lost ground academically, and mental health issues are on the rise. Many live in families who are experiencing economic instability, food insecurity, and more. APS needs a comprehensive plan to support all students as they return and recover. Based on my experience in education, this is work that I know how to do. But in addition to these immediate, real challenges, APS in the school system must act on a set of longer-term challenges over the next four years. And there are four that I'd like to talk about really quickly right now. First, I'm really concerned that we have an unsustainable budget with a gap that's projected to grow to more than 100 million in the next three years. I've researched this issue, and I published some budget analysis about this on my campaign website. I believe that there are changes we can make to the budget process in APS that will yield better results, and that there are cost savings we can achieve if we follow the example of other school systems, some of whom are saving tens of millions of dollars on specific expenditure categories. Second, and related to the budget, we aren't taking care of our staff, many of whom have been pushed to the limit this year. APS teachers have not had a full salary increase in more than a decade. Arlington now lags behind several other local school systems at several points along the pay scale. I'm really worried about this, given that we know nationally that the pipeline of new teachers is shrinking, and it's going to get increasingly competitive in hiring. Third, we have to get a handle on our enrollment and capacity issues. We've had unprecedented growth, 38% growth in students over the past decade. And even with recent school construction and expansion projects, APS will still have a shortage of seats across elementary, middle, and high school in the coming years. The good news is that we have good options at our disposal to address these issues if school and county leaders work closely together. A joint public facilities master plan, which was postponed because of the pandemic, is a really key piece of this work. Fourth, and closest to my heart, we have to make changes in our system so that it works for every child. Like other school systems across the country, there are longstanding inequities in our schools along race and class lines that the pandemic laid bare. In our schools, this affects who can read and who can't, who gets identified as gifted or disabled, and who doesn't, who gets suspended or referred to law enforcement, and which families APS listens to. In my work, I've been so excited to see many states and school districts who are using the pandemic as an opportunity not just to reopen schools, but to reimagine them, as Joe Biden likes to say, to build back better. And I know this, we can do this in Arlington as well. I know this because for more than 25 years, I've been working in K-12 education. I began my career as a high school teacher in Virginia's public schools. Later, I joined PBS in the early days of the internet to create online programs and services for teachers and students. And I worked my way up there to lead PBS's National Education Division and coordinate ed services across its system of local member stations. I left PBS when my oldest child was born, and since then, I've been working with a variety of local and national education nonprofits, where I've helped them build organizational capacity, analyze and advocate for good education policy, and launch and improve programs for educators and students. And now I want to bring what I know to serve my local community as a member of Arlington School Board. If you believe we need school board members who know education deeply and can navigate the many immediate and long-term challenges ahead, I hope you'll support my campaign. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And now we're going to hear from Miranda Turner. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. Thanks for hosting the school board candidates. I'm Miranda Turner. I'm one of the candidates seeking the Democratic endorsement for school board. I'll introduce myself personally first. I'm from this area originally. I grew up in DC, but my mom was raised here and is a Barrett, Kenmore, and Wakefield grad. I moved back to the area in 2014, to the Green Valley neighborhood. I'm a lawyer and a UVA grad. I work in private practice at a firm in DC. You can see my office behind me, and I apologize for the glare. I know it's bad. I'm married. My husband and I have three kids, oldest girl, middle boy, and a three-year-old girl. I'm a lifelong Democrat and never expected to run for elected office, but it's really an honor to be part of this process, to hear about issues, to think about being the person to help resolve them, and to earn support from voters. I became an APS parent in 2015, when we enrolled my daughter in the Montessori program at Drew. Then my son followed, and my three-year-old is now enrolled, ready to start in the fall. I'm going to talk about my older daughter for a minute. She started this school year as a third grader at Drew, virtually. We set up a pod with some other third graders and supported them as best we could. Her teacher was fantastic, super energetic, always available for a lunch bunch over the Teams app. It still didn't work well for her. Starting at the end of January, we found a private school spot for her at a small parochial school in Arlington. She's now in-person five days a week. She's happy, engaged, learning easily, and gaining confidence. She asks at least once a week when she can go back to Drew. For her and for other kids, including my son, who's still in APS and recently got to start back two days a week in person, I've been involved in return-to-school advocacy since last year. For me, this is meant asking for APS to allow the option of in-person instruction this school year, now that the teachers are vaccinated. It's meant asking what we're doing to help kids who can't or aren't learning virtually, and who are falling behind or disengaging from school altogether, and how we will bring them back and catch them up. I mention all of this because return to school is the biggest issue facing APS right now. As a school board candidate, I think it's important to talk about how I would handle it. And I'll start with the things I mentioned a few minutes ago, which are all questions I would have liked to see from our current school board and follow-up that I think is important even today for the school board members to be engaging in. There are other big issues coming at us fast, though, including enrollment, facilities, and right now, the budget. The budget's a big topic. It just got approved by the school board, but there's still a shortfall that the school board is asking the county to help with. I'm hoping the county will help. But as a school system, we've been going to the county year after year for extra funding, even before this unprecedented year. And it's not a good practice. It leads to tough cuts being proposed. This year, the big ones were middle school sports and late buses for students participating in after-school activities. That's a tough pill to swallow for kids any year, but particularly after this one. And there are clear equity implications with who might still be able to participate without that late bus, and who wouldn't. We need to take a hard look internally as well. Over the past two years, there's been a 22% increase in central office spending, while school spending increased only 4% to 8%. increase in central office spending, while school spending increased only 4% to 8%, depending elementary versus secondary. This is a trajectory that needs some attention, especially now that we should be prioritizing student-facing roles, small class sizes, and individual attention. Small class sizes are one of the things that set APS apart. On enrollment and facilities, it's not going to happen this year, but we are going to be a 30,000-student school district soon, and we need to plan for that. We'll have to build up and work with the county to find more space. After this unusual year, we should also be anticipating uneven enrollment surges, particularly with the younger grades, and continuing to think how that's going to play through the system over the next couple of years. We have to be careful with the "if you build it, they will come" approach to programs and facilities. Innovation is excellent, but a lot of our families just want their neighborhood school community, like the one my daughter was in, like the one my mom went through, with strong and appropriated, appropriately differentiated instruction for their kids, academic and extracurricular choices that provide the pathway for every student to succeed, based on their definition of what success is. And all of this has to be approached through an equity lens. That means asking who's here and who's missing, who's thriving and who's not, and how we identify those who need help in removing barriers to their own success. I want to close by explaining how I think about what my role would be on the school board. The school board is the oversight body for APS. It means it does things like vet assumptions, challenge conclusions, and ask hard questions. I have experience doing these things, and I think we need more of that on the school board to have a strong school system. I'm here to talk with you today. I look forward to your questions and I'll be asking for your vote to serve as a school board member. Thank you.
You're muted. I said, we're, we're, we're experiencing network connection overload. So I'm asking anyone other than the candidates to please turn off their, their cameras, other than to perhaps seek recognition. Okay? So maybe that'll help a bit. But we did hear you loud and clear. And now we're going to go for the first question. I'll take the prerogative of the first question. I want to ask both candidates how they feel about community use of school facilities for other community activities and events. Mary, why don't you go first?
That's a great question, Bob. And my position on that is that I would like to see county and school staff working more closely in partnership. And to me, what signals partnership is things like making school facilities available for community use in a broader way than has been, you know, the case in my experience to date. I think it is only fair that if we're looking to the county to help solve some of the future capacity issues in APS by looking at county-owned sites and ways that we could perhaps co-locate county and school programs. The flip side of that is that I think the schools have to be open to sharing facilities and making, making what we call neighborhood schools, real neighborhood hubs for organizations that need space and need, need venues to arrange, to arrange for their meetings and their functions.
Miranda?
Sure. I have to go second on this one, since I agree. I think exactly the things you said are the way to look at it. We expect cooperation between the county and the schools on lots of things, you know, funding and facilities and the like. And, and it is fair for that to go both ways. My daughter is at Drew and, and the community center is, is right next door. So that is a convenient and, and, you know, happy place for adults, community members, and students to be. And, and I agree, the concept of a neighborhood hub where people want to spend time of all ages is really something that can make our community strong.
All right. Craig Turner, do you have a question?
Mute. Common pandemic condition.
Craig, you're on mute.
Sorry. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Good. Everyone agrees about the budget issues that APS faces, but are these issues that are structural, or is it a matter of cutting expenses? It's, I guess it could be both, but what's the strongest, what bears most strongly on why we sort of come up with, come to this point every year?
I think we said we alternate. I'm happy to take it first. Yeah. And so, so I think the answer is both, but I won't stop there. I do think that the biggest driver of, of budget is, is personnel and teacher salaries and costs to, you know, employ the, the teachers and the staff who look after our children. And it's something like 80% of the budget. And that is both very large and something that I think Mary and I are probably aligned on in terms of thinking may need to increase even, because we want to treat our teachers fairly. We want to attract the best. And you've got to pay on, certainly on par with market in order to do that. And, and maybe, you know, even a little bit ahead of that in order to attract teachers, particularly after this different, difficult year, when we know they're all burned out. So that's a huge part of the budget. And the other part doesn't give you as much flex if there's just less, less there. But I do think there is room to look at our central office, central admin expenses and the expansion there. I think there were tough cuts 10 years ago or so with the recession, and some of those positions haven't yet been filled and are being filled now. So it's important to balance the real risk of burnout. If you are underpaying folks and stretching them too thin, we do need administrative support. And we are looking to expand our equity office in particular in order to make that a robust service going forward that can reach all of our schools and do the things we know we need to do. So I think generally speaking, we should look at the central admin aspects of it. And I think we should build a budget based on the revenue that we have and, and go from there, as opposed to overshooting every year and then asking for more.
Thank you. Mary, do you want to respond?
Absolutely. Yeah, I, my opponent and I definitely agree on staff salaries and the need to make sure that we're attracting and keeping top talent. Staffing is right around 80%, and that's the case in every school district across the country. And so I think one of the levers that a lot of school districts look at is they look to see, can we improve in the staffing expense category by increasing class size? What my analysis shows, when I look at data about APS, and then when I look at other school systems around the country, is that I don't think we actually need to raise class size. I think that there are savings we can realize in the staffing category by maximizing the efficiency with which we're filling our existing class size limits, right? So if we do a better job of master scheduling and we leave fewer empty seats per classroom, there are cost savings that in other school districts are running into the tens of millions of dollars in the staffing category. The two other places that I would look really carefully, one is transportation, where for a county of our size, we have a pretty large bus fleet. There are a number of reasons why that has come to be over the years. But I think that what other, other communities are doing that we should look at really closely is the way that we leverage our public transportation system in Arlington to transport our older students to and from school. So that's one that I, that I would call out. And then the last is our construction costs. So we have not a great track record in Arlington over the past several years in construction of new buildings and expansion. We've had cost overruns a lot of time and a lot of basic needs like ADA access to some of our buildings left out. And that's a capital budget concern, except that it affects our debt service and it affects the way we dip into annual operating budgets to, to retroactively fix some of our problems. We have a new Assistant Superintendent of Facilities in Arlington, and I'm really, really hopeful that we will see a big change in that area.
Thank you. Joan McDermott?
Low minority student achievement has been an ongoing issue and problem for Arlington Public Schools. I'd like to know what the two candidates would like to do to improve the achievement of our African-American and Latino students.
Mary, do you want to go first?
Absolutely. Yeah, I think that we, we need to pay really careful attention to issues of inequity by race and by class in our school system. And we see that cut across academic achievement. We see it in exclusionary discipline practices like suspensions. We see it in the rates of student responses that they feel trusted and valued in terms of school culture. We see it showed up and show up in a lot of places. If I were to focus on one area, because it's a big area we could talk about quite a bit, I would talk about literacy. So we've seen really troubling literacy statistics when we look across all grade levels in, in students' reading achievement. What I am encouraged by is that we are making a move right now to a more research-based tool that we use in elementary to catch reading difficulties. We are moving to a new English Language Arts curriculum at the elementary level, which is, has a better research base. And so I think that we should see improvements in academic achievement across all demographics. But in these groups where there have been these stubborn achievement gaps, I think that we will see improvement there. I think it's going to be really critical for the school board to make this a priority metric and for this, the, the data on this to be really transparently reported. What has been disturbing to me as a community member is that we have known for several years that we've had these gaps for students with disabilities, for English language learners, for students of different races in reading, and that hasn't really been made public in the way that it needs to be. So we need a little more sunshine on that data. And the school board really has to make sure that the superintendent and his staff are accountable in ways that perhaps we haven't seen.
Miranda?
Yes, thanks for the question. I think the most direct way to address these achievement gaps that we know that we have and that this year have gotten worse is to bring them out into the light, as Mary said, to collect the data, to publish it, and to follow up on it. Right now, what we've been seeing over the past school year is periodic snapshots into how English language learners are proceeding through levels and how reading assessments are going for younger kids, middle school grades, high school grades. Data should be collected in a systematic way. It should be presented regularly, and there should be follow-up, because the most direct way to address achievement gaps and inequity is to know that it's there, to know where it is, and to go out and let our teachers do what they do, which is to close gaps, to bring students forward, to catch them up. I think literacy is also incredibly important as a foundational measure for all schools. APS hasn't taught it consistently across schools. There's a saying, I think in Arlington among parents, that APS is a system of schools and not a school system. And different schools implemented different reading curriculum. My kids got strong phonics based on the school that they went to. Not every child has had that. We're moving forward with that. Dr. Jerran is making that a priority, as I understand, and that's a really good thing. We should implement that everywhere across our elementary schools and let our students have strong foundational literacy skills. I think we also need to do a better job of identifying learning disabilities or other difficulties. There are disparities by race and ethnicity in who is actually identified as having these barriers to learning, to learning to read, and that's something that should be addressed in a systematic way as well.
Thank you. Herschel Cantor?
Yeah, I was wondering about the role of resource officers, police officers, and what your views are, both of your views?
All right, I'm done with this. Let's see.
I'll, I'll take that one. So when I grew up, we did not have police officers in schools as a regular thing. And I'm a lawyer. And so the way I think about what happens when a police officer shows up is it changes your rights. It, it makes the situation completely different and you have fewer rights. So to me, I don't see the need as a default for having police officers in schools, particularly at the younger grades. I think it's a conversation that can be had if there is a need to actually police a school. But in Arlington, I am not sure that need is present. I think the practice comes with real harms for some of our students. And I think that we will, it will be interesting to see what comes out of the working group that's currently going on right now and going to present its recommendations to the school board. But my view on it is, I think that we need to move in a direction of getting the school, the student resource officers out of the schools.
Okay. Mary?
Yeah, yeah. I really appreciate the question. And what it calls to mind for me is when I was a classroom teacher, the high school where I taught, which was outside of Charlottesville, Virginia, we had a school resource officer. And the school resource officer was meant to keep us safe and make us feel safe. The school resource officer reported for work every day with full, in full garb, including bulletproof vest and holstered weapon. And I can tell you that for me and for many of my students, they described the environment as like a prison, not like a school. So I, you know, I carry that, that little bit of prejudice or bias, I guess, with me. But what I can say more generally is that, you know, every student deserves the right to feel safe in school, every, every single student. And I think this ironically is the premise, right, for having SROs in school, is that it's going to make everybody safe. And yet, when you look at the research across the country, the presence of SROs in school does not deter criminal acts in our schools. And in fact, what the research shows is that for students with disabilities and students of color, they are disproportionately impacted by, they're disproportionately impacted by, by having law enforcement in schools. And what we can see is that Virginia, sadly, has the unfortunate honor of leading the nation in referrals of students to law enforcement, which has just got to change. And so I think we need to follow the example of other communities like DC, which have recently concluded that they're going to take their SROs out of schools. And instead, they're going to pivot to an approach that emphasizes de-escalation techniques that every staff member in a school needs to know, and mental health supports for students who are in crisis. So I think we need more of that and, and less of policing.
Right. We've had one question in the chat asking each of you what you think of the future for the Arlington Planetarium. Mary, you get to go first.
Yeah, I appreciate that question. I have two kids who are now in middle school at Kenmore, and the Planetarium has been a great experience for them. And then for our family as community members, we are in a tough budget time. So we're looking at this financial cliff of more than $100 million in budget gap. And, you know, that puts everything on the table, including beloved services like the Planetarium and the Outdoor Lab. Something that I've been researching, that I'm really interested in, is there are, across the country, thousands of nonprofit organizations that have been set up as education foundations that are separate 501(c)(3)'s that work in partnership with the school district. And what's really fascinating to me is that all of our surrounding jurisdictions have those foundations and Arlington doesn't. And so I'd like to do a little detective work to find out why. But these foundations are generating hundreds of thousands and sometimes millions of dollars to support special programs in STEM learning, in things like, in things like the Outdoor Lab and the Planetarium. So what I'm interested in is finding ways that we can support programs like the Planetarium as much as possible within the existing school board budget. But we're planning in parallel to look at ways like, at ways that things like user fees for Planetarium and aquatics, or things like revenue that can be gained charitably through these kinds of foundations to support some of these special initiatives that we really have cared about in Arlington.
Miranda?
Yes, thanks. And I saw the question in the chat was phrased as, do we really need a Planetarium? And the answer is obviously no. I think there are lots of things that are nice to haves and are really important to haves and aren't needs. And in a tough budget situation like the one we have now and the one we will probably be facing next year, there is ample room to disagree about what our priorities should be and, and to recognize that all of these things come with trade-offs. And the Planetarium may be providing really excellent educational outcomes for lots of students, or it may be little-used and something that we should consider if we really have to, putting, putting to the side during, during these conditions. But I think the, the point is that when you look at a difficult budget situation, you have to engage with what the trade-offs are and what the creative solutions might be, sliding scale for user fees or otherwise, and move forward with the best information you have at the time. And that's the sort of thing that I would envision doing as a school board member.
Thank you. Our next question is, how will you and the school board assure that the schools are safe to reopen fully in fall 2021? And I think Miranda goes first.
Sure. Well, you, given my opening remarks, you should know that I'm loaded for bear on this one. But, but yeah, it's incredibly important to make sure that we can reopen as close to normal as possible in the fall, because so many kids want to go back and we're seeing that now. I think we should think about two things in particular. One is all of the data out of schools worldwide and across this country and in Virginia and in APS so far is showing that return to school can be done safely. APS is doing the biggest and most important mitigation APS is doing the biggest and most important mitigation protocols, masking, universal masking, it's keeping distance, it is doing lunch outside when feasible. They think the cicadas may throw a monkey wrench into that one. And most importantly, the teachers have been vaccinated. So the adults in the buildings have had their chance to get their first shots, their second shots, and two weeks have passed for for most of them. And that is critical, I think, to ensuring the safety of the folks who are more at risk, which is the adults. For the children, they're wearing masks and they are keeping their distance, and it's working. And I think we see that with the data that we have, and I think that cases are going to continue to decline, I'm hopeful. And I'm hopeful that we can move forward in a way in the fall that allows all children who want to come back for in-person learning to do that full-time and as close to normal as possible, maintaining a virtual option for those who still need it.
Thank you. Mary?
Yeah, I, you know, Miranda and I are in full agreement that we want to get kids who are ready and able to be back in school as fully as possible, as quickly as possible. In Virginia and in APS, our superintendent has committed to a five-day in-person option next fall. Many of you know that the state is mandating a full-time in-person option when school reopens in August. I wrote about this issue last week, and I published some information about it on my campaign website. The big worry for me in my own head is that August is about four months away, and there's a lot of work that we need to do to make sure that we will be ready to welcome more students than we are today in the hybrid model, right? So we have a limited number of our student population in schools right now. We hope with vaccinations and other measures that are going to happen over the next few months that we'll see students coming back and we'll be able to welcome them back full-time. We know that in APS, the majority of our school buildings in normal times are overcapacity, right? So when we, when we, when we do the math and we add in CDC's social distancing guidelines, even at an updated three-foot social distance in many school situations instead of six feet, when you do that math, there's some really careful planning that APS needs to be doing right now to make sure that in classrooms and in common areas like hallways and lunchrooms, that we will be able to safely accommodate students. What I flagged in this piece that I published last week is that from the community perspective, we are not hearing about active planning for those scenarios that will make sure that we can safely accommodate all students given social distancing, and that all of those things have budget implications, right? So there's going to be a final budget voted on next month, and I'm not seeing a lot of these costs reflected in that budget, and I think that that should concern all parents and all staff because their safety is is very important, too.
Thank you. The next question is, the state legislature has effective May 1 authorized collective bargaining between county employees, including school board employees, and their bosses, and it's in the option of each county. How do you feel about collective bargaining? What approach would you take? What do you see your role as a school board member in collective bargaining? And I guess it's Mary's turn, right?
Absolutely. Yeah, I will. I mean, I'll just, I will say outright, I'm in favor of collective bargaining. You heard Terry McAuliffe talk about teacher pay earlier and the appalling state of our compensation for staff. You've heard me talk about how we are lagging behind other school systems on the pay scale. If we try to economize by skimping on teacher salaries, we're going to be cutting off our nose to spite our face. Teachers have been in Virginia historically in a really difficult position in terms of negotiating for the full salary that that I and many others believe that they deserve. And actually, when we look at our own school board policy, the step increase that is a really fundamental piece of how educators get compensated across the country, the step increase is actually enshrined in policy. And multiple times over the past several years, the school board has voted to waive its own policy in order to sidestep this, the step increase. So if the school board is not going to honor its own policy, then I think it's incumbent upon us to empower educators to advocate collectively for what I think that they're fairly do. What we're seeing in other school systems, Fairfax, for example, is getting ready for collective bargaining by actually, by actually building a small team and some expertise in collective bargaining. And I think that that's something that APS will need to do as well. And as a school board member, I would want to work closely with staff to understand how how we're going to navigate the waters of collective bargaining, which frankly will be brand new for everyone.
Miranda?
Sure. I also support collective bargaining unions. I'm a Democrat after all. It seems sort of in our bloodstream. I think that this is a decision that's going to go to the county board, but as a school board member, it is important to understand what the issues are so that they can be cooperatively and productively resolved. And I think teacher comp is a big one. The step in the COLA every year used to be a policy. It's not anymore. I think that's something that we should probably get back to as soon as we can under current budget conditions, because again, our teachers are who makes APS what it is. And I would love to see them compensated fairly, and I would love to see us be able to attract the best and still keep our class sizes small, because again, that's something that really sets APS apart from some of our neighboring school districts. And so I think that working together to make sure our teachers and our staff are treated fairly and are happy working for APS is the best way to serve this community and our students.
Thank you. The next question is, both of you seem to be qualified conscientious candidates, and there's a lot of agreement between you. What would you say is the greatest contrast between the two of you as candidates? And I believe we're starting with Miranda.
Sure. So I think one point of distinction is probably on return to schools issues. I agree that there should be more leadership and better planning. But at this point, I think the guidance from the state and the federal government is pushing us to try to get more students in the doors now, this school year. And I have a real sense that what's happening now is a little bit of giving up on this school year, and I think that's a real shame for our students. Now, I'm not in the role now, and if I were to win the election, I wouldn't be seated until next year. But this is the sort of big, huge, important issue that school board members have to confront. We will have another one, hopefully not as big. And I think it is really important to lead on the issue. Office light just went off, sorry about that. I think it's important to lead on the issue, and I think it's important to come out and say this is the direction we should be moving in. This is how we're going to do it safely. The CDC guidance allows three feet of distancing. I think that we can fit more kids into classrooms. I know we have more kids who want to go for more days a week, and we should be moving forward on that now. I think another point of distinction, which is not a huge difference, but it's in how I conceptualize the role. I don't have an education background in the same way that Mary does, and I think about the role of the school board as an oversight body. And that means you have to dig into the weeds from time to time, but generally speaking, you're vetting proposals that come forward. You're making sure the staff is thinking through assumptions, that they're not baking in their conclusions to their work along the way, and that they are asking themselves and that the school board is asking, what are the alternatives that you've considered? Why did you reject them? And why are we going in this direction? And making sure it makes sense. So that's how I think about the role, and that's why I'm running for the position.
Thank you. Now, Mary?
Yeah, that's, that's an interesting and really good question. I would say that I agree with Miranda that I think we have a slight difference of opinion on, on some of the, some of the nuance of return to school, although we share the goal of making sure we can get everybody who's able and ready in as quickly as safely as possible. The devil of that, of course, is in the details. The other thing I would just call out is I feel like I have a lot of respect for Miranda and the group that she leads and their advocacy around the immediate return to school issue. I want to make sure that on the school board, we have the the mental bandwidth and the attention necessary to focus on the immediate challenges and in parallel, be working on longer-term challenges. So while I want to see return to schools be, be a big priority this, this, this year certainly and into next year, I want to make sure that our school board doesn't lose sight of its other responsibilities, which include a sustainable budget, which include proper oversight and evaluation of our superintendent. And those evaluation measures are not well-understood in the community today. So there's definitely some work there. And in looking at policy, we have so many policies in APS over the next year, year and a half, that are going to come up for renewal. Some of them are more than a decade old, and I think the school board has a real opportunity to pivot and kind of reimagine what our schools look like by enshrining some of the changes we'd like to see in policy, working collaboratively on that with the superintendent.
Thank you. I'm going to read a question from Marion Miller, who is, as you know, quite an advocate for the arts. And she says, arts education, and we can also say arts and humanities, is losing out in, to competing with technology and seeking to achieve STEM. What are each of the candidates' position on the role of arts and humanities and its current slipping at APS? And we'll go with, I believe, Mary first.
Yeah, thank you, Bob. What I am seeing in my own work life in education is this, actually this growing recognition that as we've talked about STEM education, science, tech, engineering, and math, we've seen a little bit of a pivot where people are talking about STEAM, where they've added in arts, which is a little step in the right direction, but actually in the broader, in the broader landscape and in industry, there's this growing recognition that to be successful in technical and scientific roles, you need to have a lot of the skills that arts and humanities education reinforce. And actually, at companies, it's interesting that several companies are actually looking outside of traditional, like, computer coding, very tech-intensive preparation, looking at humanities grads, because they find that they are actually as effective and sometimes more effective in, in highly technical roles. So I think there's a really strong case to be made for the importance of arts and humanities from a, you know, job and economic perspective. As a former English teacher and an American Studies major, I'll just say that, you know, from a perspective of leading a full and fulfilling life, a liberal arts education and exposure to the arts and humanities are important for us as well-rounded adult individuals in our communities and in our personal lives. So I think that there's a shift that's happening that is reorienting a little bit around arts and humanities. I would hope to see that reflected in Arlington. And when the strategic plan comes up again for APS, there's another, there's another cycle for that that's going to come up towards the end of this coming school board term. My hope would be to make sure that that's reflected in that plan, working, the school board working with APS staff.
Thank you.
It's sort of frightening to me what you're saying. I just want you to know that
Okay, but, but let's let
Arts and humanities can go outside of school, so it's, it's fine, it's nice, but the big problem is what's its importance in
Yes, I understand that. Miriam, we have a rule, and the rules allow
One question. Can I keep talking?
No, no. They allow both candidates to answer each question, so I'll let you
Oh, okay, okay.
Ask the second question after Miranda responds to your first question. Miranda, you have the floor.
Thank you. I'll do my best. I was a former liberal arts major here, too, so, so I agree, arts and humanities are important, and we joke about how adding the A to STEM is really just school, not STEAM. But I think there's, there's a role for that. And what I've seen during the pandemic in particular, where all of our kids' educations were really brought into our dining rooms, so to speak, is that I'd like to see APS be stronger in, in the core side of things in terms of writing. And literacy, which I mentioned before, is obviously important, but I think our writing instruction is a, is a little bit of a weakness, and I think that we should push forward with that and strengthen that and not let the use of technology and the personalized learning devices that are a part of how APS educates our kids get in the way of actual pen, pencil, and the other subject matters, arts and humanities, that may be easier to skip over, gloss over, give short shrift to when we are so focused on math, science, technology, and on learning on devices. So I hope that APS can move forward in providing a well-rounded education that hits on all of the, the subjects, because, you know, again, student success in APS is really based on what engages that student and what keeps them happy and learning in school, and it's going to be different for everybody. And I think it's important to reach all of those kids, you know, and see, see what turns on their light bulb.
Okay. I'm going to let Miriam pose a second question to both candidates, and Miriam has the floor. And then after she poses the candidate, then we'll go to Herschel for, for a question. But Miriam, do you have a question?
Well, I really do. On behalf of a woman I met at something put on by the school board and at a conference, and her son had died of suicide at Yorktown High School, and that he's not the only one. And her theory, what she was doing was trying to focus and get help from the school board on other children who suffer from such stress, because that's, I guess, stress can lead to suicide. And it seemed to me that the county does not have, they have like one social worker or whatever for several schools, so it's very lightly remedy or dress and all. And, and it's something you don't think happens, you know, but I, I know of two anyway, but that's not, that's not a crowd, but, but it's a tension, the stress, and it hits at the top of high school, so I think, anyway, I just
The question that came is, what are you doing about stress in the schools and the potential for student suicide? And we'll go with Miranda first.
Sure. It's a really sadly important and salient issue these days in particular. Some rough numbers on, on APS from a presentation I saw recently was, in any given year, there may be 400 reports of, of a suicide risk, possible ideation, possible self-harm, that come in through APS. So, so there's a sadly, there is a significant number of those kids. This year, it's been more like 84, 85, which shows not that things are improving, but probably that they're being hidden. And when we start returning schools, returning students to the school buildings and moving forward, I think that we're going to see a surge, unfortunately. And I know APS is already thinking about this. There is attention being paid to increasing social emotional learning, to increasing the number of counselors in schools. The recent presentation work session between the county and the school board suggested maybe we have enough counselors at the high school level, the middle school level, we need to do better with the elementary kids. And I can see firsthand, among my, my children, my friends' children, not every student has come out of this totally emotionally healthy. And I don't think it's going to be like flipping a switch to get these kids back from a whole year of this. This is a huge part of their lives percentage-wise. And moving forward, yeah, I think we're going to really need to stress social emotional learning and having counselors in schools and reaching out, identifying kids who are at risk, and making sure the appropriate, the appropriate attention is brought to bear.
Thank you. Mary, it's your turn.
Yeah, I, I would echo everything that Miranda just said. I think what we've seen during the pandemic is a real concern and a worry about dramatic signs of mental issues like risk of suicide, but even sort of low simmering risks of depression and anxiety that many parents anecdotally are reporting and that studies, studies across the country are beginning to highlight. When we look at the budget, and this, bear with me on this pivot, the budget this year includes additional funding for elementary school counselors, and that's actually because at the state level, this need is being recognized, and the State Board of Education has called for a better counselor-to-staff ratio. We are, we've, we're doing pretty well at the middle and high school, but when they looked across the state, they felt like more was needed at the elementary level. So I'm happy to see that that's in place. One other thing I called out in the budget feedback that I published to the website is APS is currently including funding this year for something that it's calling a universal social and emotional learning screener. What those typically are in education are measures that will, that test how well kids' own social and emotional skills are, and those are typically things like, can you negotiate conflict? Are you empathetic to other people? But those are not looking for mental health issues. And what I would really like to see APS have in the budget is not an SEL, social emotional learning screener, but a true mental health screener that is looking for signs of mental distress and looking and looking for signs of trauma so that we can take that data and then design appropriate services and supports for students.
Okay. Herschel, the the next question is yours.
Okay, I have a question about the digital divide. And the question is not so much what the school should be doing, but rather what the school board members can be doing, working with the county to get universal connectivity.
Okay, Mary, that's your your question first.
I am so glad you raised that issue because one of the things that I looked at in my work life last spring in the early days of the school shutdown, I actually wrote a report where I looked at different states and I analyzed how they were responding to COVID based on a number of different dimensions. And one of them was this digital divide issue. And there are a number of places across the country, as Terry McAuliffe said earlier, where they're doing a much better job than we are in Virginia at ensuring universal access and and curing this digital divide. When I was new in education back in the 1990s, we talked about digital divide as E-rate, meaning every school needed to be connected. And of course, we've done that, but we haven't really finished that job if students at home don't have the access that they need to complete school assignments and do research. And and now in virtual learning especially, to be doing, you know, doing school. So I think that as a school board member, the role of the school and the county board is to advocate strongly at the state and federal levels for a program for universal broadband access. And I think of this as kind of E-rate 2.0 or 3.0, where we need to call upon our state government and our federal government to do more to make sure that our students and every family have access to broadband, which in these days should be should be like a utility, like you have access to water.
Okay, thank you. Miranda?
I think I think during the beginning months of the pandemic and over the summer, the county and the school board worked relatively well together to identify the issues confronting particular families and to to provide the help that was needed in order to prepare kids for virtual learning. The county stepped in. And and I think that that was a really good thing. And I hope that cooperative relationship continues. I know from the APS school board perspective, a lot of it was done at the school level. And we rely a lot on our principals and our school counselors and our teachers to identify kids who may not have reliable internet at home and who need something, something in the way of a Comcast voucher, in the way of assistance from the county, in the way of some support. And and that, I think, is something that should be subject to oversight by by both Dr. Duran and and the school board to make sure our kids are getting what they need. From a system-wide perspective, I think that there is a role to be played by APS in the school board to make sure we're supporting our students in their technology needs equitably across the school system. I think that right now, this year, it's been particularly important to look at the IT supports provided to students within schools and to, again, making sure they're equitable. I think the elementary schools, as an example, have one IT person who is the point person per school. And that person serves entirely different roles, depending on which school. At a school like Jamestown, that person is troubleshooting teams and and making sure kids can stay connected and helping kids like my daughter, who locked herself out of her iPad three or four times during the fall. At a school like Randolph, they're helping families get basic access to internet. And that is a much bigger lift. And if a school needs more supports in order to get what's needed to our students, that's a place where APS and the school board should be taking a look and making sure we're providing those resources that can help our students succeed.
Thank you. All right, before we go to closing arguments, I want to just explain that we've sent out two emails now with detailed explanation of the voting system for the school board endorsement. And in fact, it's not like our previous caucuses where you go in person and vote. This is, this is basically going to be done largely over the internet online, the third week in May. And there are a few few limited number of hours where you can go in person for sort of tech help. But everybody's going to vote over a computer, either on your own or or at one of these help sites. Having said that, so you don't have to say that. We'll now go to closing arguments and we'll go with Miranda first.
I like how you frame that as a closing argument. That really plays to my strengths. So I'll just mention one thing that I saw in the chat, actually. I was, I was sort of taking a look. And I wanted to address a couple of follow-ups on the SRO issue, just because I think that it's a really nuanced issue that people feel strongly about. And that sort of points up one of the things that the school board should be taking a leadership role in, right? I think it's important for the community to see all angles of the issue. And the working group, I think, is a really good step in that direction. And to understand that people feel differently about it. And and the role of a school board member is to make sure we're hearing from all members of the community who are affected and understanding our views and explaining very clearly, if we decide to go in the direction of getting SROs out of schools, this is why we're doing it. And if we don't decide to go in a different direction, this is why we're not doing it. And that's sort of explanation and appreciation of the nuance, I think, is really an important thing for a school board member to be able to provide. Just in closing, I want to say, I think, as a community, the public school system is a huge part of how our progressive values play out. And I am proud to be an APS parent. I think, though, among parents, there's a sense that in recent years, APS can and should be better. And I think there's a sense that our school board isn't always asking the hard questions, isn't always putting as much energy into questioning the recommendations of the staff and isn't helping APS in the way it should to navigate what are sometimes incredibly difficult choices that bring out a lot of emotion and a lot of feeling in our community. I've been looking at these issues from an outside perspective for several years. Boundary processes, pandemic learning loss, return to school issues. I've been asking, under some circumstances, that APS do it differently. So in running for school board, I'm hoping to start asking these questions from the inside and pressing for a real, strong role for the school board as a part of that. And I hope to have your support. I really thank you for your time today. I hope I addressed the questions. And as as Bob said, the caucus voting will be online starting May 17. I hope to have your vote.
Thank you. Mary, it's your turn.
Yeah, thank you, Bob. And thank you, everybody, again, for the opportunity to talk with you today about the school board race. During this gathering, I've heard you express interest and concern on several issues, including our achievement gap, our budget, school resource officers, mental health, broadband, lots of things. And some of these, like return to school and mental health issues for our students, represent immediate challenges that APS and school boards, school board will need to address. Others, like the achievement gap and the budget, are really stubborn, long-term issues that we can't afford to lose sight of, even while we're working on our very real and immediate needs. It's important, I think, that we have elected leaders who can attend to the immediate concerns while in parallel tackling these long-term challenges and opportunities. I've been a leader of local and national education organizations, and I know how to identify priorities and measure progress towards them. I believe that we can improve how APS is currently doing this and then transparently share its progress and its performance with the community. I know education, too. And I know we can reimagine our schools so that every student is seen, supported, challenged, and valued. As a school board member, I would hold myself and APS leadership accountable for dismantling policies and practices that just don't work anymore, that don't deliver great return on investment, and that perpetuate inequities. We can learn so much from the innovations of other school systems and states. And I'm really eager to bring my firsthand experience of this to Arlington. There's too much at stake right now for Arlington students locally and for our democracy nationally not to get education right. I invite you to learn more about my experience, my platform, and the specific actions I take as a school board member by visiting my website. Also, I hope this is just the beginning of a conversation. So if you have additional questions or issues you'd like to talk through, I'm happy to take a call, take a walk, get back on Zoom or meet for coffee sometime to hear more about your ideas and your experiences for Arlington schools. Thank you.
We want to thank both of you for taking the time to spend with us. And we wish you both success. And again, you know, everybody, please be sure to vote in the school board endorsement caucus. Our next meeting is the second Tuesday in May. We've invited the two candidates for county board. And we're also probably going to have a few wrap-up candidate announcements from the the other elections. And again, thank you all for participating. So we'll adjourn till next month. Thank you.
Thank you.